I hereby call to order this twenty seven May, two thousand and twenty five, City Council Meeting. Mr. Wood, would you lead us in?
Yeah, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
If you wish to speak at the, any of the public hearings or the citizens' comment period, their sign up sheets in the rear of the chamber, please sign up. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slowzier. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item three is matters from the mayor. For me, Councilman Wooden and myself attended the Memorial Day service on Monday. That's put on by the American Legion salute. Who am I missing?
That's enough.
That's enough?
Yeah.
Very, very, very nice ceremony and had a nice crowd, even with the weather, the way it was. So, we thank them for that. Even the Waynesboro High School football team assisted with that as well. Also, on the twenty third of May, last Friday, I visited the Waynesboro Public Library and talked to Ms. Verz and our librarian. Lots of good things going on at the library. Would encourage you all to, you know, get out and see what they're doing out there. Item four is matters from council. Anybody?
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo what you said about the Memorial Day service. Also, the, the high school girls tennis team was there. They were the ones who placed the wreaths during the ceremony. The boys from the football team were there last year, actually, and it was one of the most talked about things in the community. And they came back this year and they were actually part of the ceremony as well. So, you know, much appreciation to Waynesboro High School and the kids being involved with their Memorial Day services. Also, I was, I took part in a meeting of the trustees of the Chando Valley Arts Center. And they've got a lot of good things going on over at the Arts Center. So, if you haven't been over and seen any of their displays or any of their projects they have going on, I would highly encourage folks to go out to the Chando Valley Arts Center. They do a great job. And lastly, the Memorial Day or the veterans' presentation set up by the curator Jeremy over at the Waynesboro Heritage Museum about veterans in Waynesboro, Waynesboro through the war years is, is a very, very nice display. He worked really hard on it and I hope that people would kind of get out and go, go up and down Main Street and see what we've got to see. The tour, tour of the town is tomorrow night and that'd be a good time to go in and, and visit a lot of the shops and see Jeremy's setup down at, over at the Waynesboro Heritage Museum. That's all I got for you there, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wood. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item six is the second consideration of an ordinance amending the city code, Chapter ninety eight, Article four, Section six dot seven and four dot ten pertaining to the orientation requirements for service bay doors and Section ninety eight dash three dot three dot two dot B pertaining to buffering requirements for service bay doors. This ordinance was subject of a public hearing and has been properly introduced and discussed. Ms. Tate?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I will just do a brief recap of the presentation that I gave at your meeting two weeks ago when we held the public hearing. So, this is a zoning text amendment that deals with car washes and then also vehicle sales and service. We did have an applicant that requested an amendment to the section, kind of specifically to car washes. The change would address the orientation of bay doors within the city's entrance corridors. Bay doors are addressed in two places within the ordinance, car washes, but also vehicle sales and service. And so, staff recommended keeping both sections consistent and making any amendment in both places. So, the current ordinance requires that the bay doors face away from designated entrance corridors and also residential districts. The intention of that ordinance was to protect the viewshed quality of your entrance corridors and then your views from adjacent residential uses. Staff feels like the, the kind of stricter requirement of that orientation has led to mixed results and, and we'll show you some pictures of those. So, the amendment aims to more consistently reduce the visual impact bay doors may have to adjacent residential areas and within the entrance corridors. And that's through kind of the additional ability for staff to provide some enhanced buffering and you'll note that in the amendment. So, the way that ordinance currently reads is highlighted there in red that all service bay doors shall face away from adjacent residential uses and from corridors that are designated in the ordinance. And I'll show you a map of those. So, this is the picture within the ordinance that shows if this is your entrance corridor or your designated corridor, that your bay doors not face that corridor. So, these are the designated entrance corridors within the city. And again, really, the purpose is these main entryways or, or kind of corridors that travel through the city, that they be visually and aesthetically pleasing. So, some existing examples that we note is the take five. That was developed accordance to the, in accordance with the existing ordinance that did not allow those bay doors to front on the entrance corridor, on roster. When I speak about mixed results, you know, staff has identified that you do, for the majority of your drive down the corridor, you're viewing the bay doors. And so, kind of looking at ways of being kind of site specific and identifying how the layout works best. This is another example. A lot of times, the car washes have less openings, door openings, and, and really in site specific ways depending on the materials or if there's existing trees or vegetation or, or other features that might block those, those service doors. This is an example of the discount tire and you note kind of how maybe it's less visually impactful than the take five because it sits kind of down and, and is not directly in your viewshed as you're driving the corridor. So, again, the ordinance, as currently worded, kind of just has a strict requirement that they face away from adjacent residential uses and from those corridors that are designated within the ordinance. And so, the zoning text amendment would change both for car washes and vehicle sales and service to say that bay doors shall not face residential uses on adjoining parcels. So, that's the way the ordinance is currently written, but clarifies that those parcels would be adjoining and shall face the direction having the least negative impact on our entry corridors. The site review team shall make the final decision determining orientation. And then, the kind of additional component, important component of the text amendment is that additional screening deemed necessary by the zoning administrator to protect views from adjacent properties may be required. So, if we feel like a privacy fence would be better than just having some kind of landscaping buffer, then it's something that we could request as part of the site plan review. We did hold a, a public hearing at the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the text amendment. And then, we, we held a public hearing at your meeting two weeks ago. Happy to answer any questions.
I think the only thing I, as I say, is that, I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm interested in, in understanding the totality of the process because, while I'm not entirely averse to it, I do, you know, for whatever it's worth, considering, you know, what happens in, when I, when I'm not here, maybe our other, other colleagues aren't here, five, 10 years, how do you apply the consistency and continuity of the application from the site review perspective, ensuring consistency? So, I mean, actually, and, and I, I appreciate there are not great, you know, there are limited examples, right, from when the ordinance was placed to those that have actually come online. But I think, like, the take five, I don't particularly see that as a failure of, of the code. And the reason for that is when that property was originally zoned for that use, behind it was to be residential. Remaining, the balance of the property is zone residential, right? So, so we actually keep the bay doors away from the residential by the design of that. But of course, it's vacant land right now. So, I would be interested to, to see, to, to fully vet what the process would be, to see through, you know, a scoring protocol, what the review context would be. Because the last thing I would also want to do from a customer service perspective is, the last thing a developer wants is not to know what they're going to get themselves into, right? And so, to, they want to, they want to have certainty in their development process. And so, I think to aspire to that and to help them and ourselves, I'd, I'd kind of like to see the total sum of the process before we would entertain it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Question?
Look at me now, good.
So, I think we're asking to table.
I'd, I'd put that in the motion, form of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
And kind of bring back to you some of those criteria of how we would evaluate.
Right.
Get some consistency into it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Wood. So, there's the, the motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Table and.
Okay. Thank you.
Item seven is to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending city code, Section seventy eight dash one five four, levy of tax, meal tax. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have just one clarifying note for this item and that is that after we had introduced the ordinance, the commissioner communicated a desire to have some additional time to communicate the change, if adopted, to our businesses. And so, the plan would be to have the change effective or the increase in the rate effective August first. And we've discussed that change with council and that is regarded as an immaterial change. And so, council can proceed with the ordinance in its current form.
Okay.
Oh, yep. I'm sorry. Thinking to myself.
I hereby open the public hearing.
Well, we do have one individual signed up to speak, Mr. Kurt Lilly.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Lilly, six forty nine Walnut Avenue. A few weeks ago, this room was packed. Most of the people that spoke were against raising taxes. Raising taxes affects everyone. Meals tax only affects those who eat, so there's an upside. Property tax affects property owners, but those owners of apartments and businesses raise their rates. That affects anyone buying anything in the city. It also affects renters. So, in summary, you have heard the citizens. I think you're tone deaf. The citizens of Waynesboro, the majority of them, are against raising taxes. I would urge you not to raise taxes. I don't care if it's a meal or what tax it is. It's just affecting the citizens that you were supposed to be representing. So, thank you for your time.
That's all.
I hereby close the public hearing. This ordinance has been properly introduced. Unless there's additional consideration, discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, four one. Item eight is the second consideration of an ordinance imposing taxes for calendar year two thousand and twenty five. Mr. Hamp?
Cameron, are you, you're, Mr. McCormick is going to handle this one.
Mr. McCormick?
Can we turn some lights on over here?
Well, I have a presentation.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, oh, yeah. This way. Just a little. Okay.
So, this evening, we're going to go over a couple of different items. The fund balance uses as well as the two thousand and twenty six supplemental budget requests. One of the things that staff needs some input on during the budget process this year, council requested a, a budget for two thousand and twenty six and then preliminary projection budgets for two thousand and twenty seven, two thousand and twenty eight, two thousand and twenty nine, and then anything that was unplanned. And so, that was delivered during the city manager's budget presentation. And since council consideration of that budget, there have been some changes. So, the first sheet that you have is exactly as it was presented during the two thousand and twenty six city manager's budget. And the second sheet are the items in red that were either changed directly by city council or through some input of staff. And so, a couple of clarifying points on that. The first line, the community vitality fund, the reason that only says a hundred thousand dollars in the current year is this is, that fund balance column is just the small cap line. There's two hundred thousand dollars in the CIP as well, so that's three hundred thousand dollars total. And then, for two thousand and twenty seven, a planned three hundred thousand dollar continued investment in that project. Transfer to other funds, the high school debt payment reserve, we moved that from nine hundred thousand to one point one million. And so, I reduced the two thousand and twenty eight budget from one point six to one point four. Economic development enhancements, we had moved some of those items to fund balance. That's reflected. Fire parking lot repaving, that was something that came through in a CIP request that's probably more appropriate to be small cap because it's one year. So, I just moved it on to this sheet. Salary scale plotting and readjustments, I moved, I reduced it to the one point five million that was suggested, then moved five hundred thousand dollars to two thousand and twenty seven to fund the remaining quarter of this year and then six hundred thousand dollars to two thousand and twenty eight. Some miscellaneous, miscellaneous items that got moved to fund balance and then equipment purchases that got moved to fund balance. So, the main thing that I think we would like guidance on this evening, once the budget is adopted, if that's what council desires to do, is do you want us to show the multi-year budget in the budget book? And if so, do you want it shown as it is? Do you want us to take two thousand and twenty's, twenty six, excuse me, two thousand and twenty six and the fund balance and then combine the next four columns as not to provide prioritization? Or is there some other method by which you would like this to appear in your budget, understanding it's just a planning document, but it is something that will be out there for public consumption and staff's priorities might not completely reflect council's priorities? So, some input might be necessary.
Okay. So, outside of, you would just take two thousand and twenty six and combine it, you said, with the?
So, I could take, and the, the first two columns would remain the same, assuming that we adopt as is and the fund balance uses are done as is. And then, I could do, show two thousand and twenty seven through unplanned, all in one kind of column, just so that you come back to the same total. So, you have all your supplemental show, requests shown in your budget and what was cut shown in your budget. I can show it as it sits or we can omit it entirely. It's not a required document, but it is, that would be a regression from previous years because it is something that we've generally shown. It's, we wouldn't want to put something into the budget document that then we point back to later and say, well, we said we were going to do this in two thousand and twenty seven or two thousand and twenty eight and we're flipping a priority. So, wouldn't want to get hung up on that in a future year, but also would like to still be able to use it as a, a good planning tool. My first inclination is to show it and even footnote it to explain it a little bit better because this is a public document for everybody to understand and I'd like to see it be as least confused as possible. Okay. You know, for the person reading at home, somebody doesn't have the time to sit and or hasn't had the last, what, six months that we've been going over this, when they just looked at it initially, they don't get a sticker shock right off the bat. So, I would even add some footnotes in there to make sure that it's very clear. An asterisk of some sort over the planned column? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I like that idea too. I mean, particularly for some of, for some of the larger planned projects, you know, such as the high school, is that to explain that instead of going, hey, go back to the tape, that there's a footnote, I think it's Mr. Wood has explained. I think that, that's a, that's a, that's a great idea.
Okay. So, I will do that and bring it back probably at the last meeting in June to be prepped for the budget book release in early July. And this would serve to cover this item, this presentation would serve to cover the item in front of you now and the next item as well, the taxes and the budget.
Okay. So, this ordinance was subject of a public hearing and has been properly introduced and discussed. Is there additional comments or discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yep, four one. Item nine is the second consideration of an ordinance establishing the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. Any?
The previous presentation covers this item as well.
This ordinance was the subject of a public hearing and has been properly introduced and discussed. Is there additional comments or discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ayes have it, four one. Item ten is the second consideration of an ordinance amending the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty six budget in the amount of nine hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred forty four. Mr. McCormick?
So, Mr. Hamp is going to take this one. The only additional comment we have this evening is just to confirm that the council received the information requested about the thought process our staff uses in determining whether we purchase new or used equipment.
We did. Did everybody receive that?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. There's no other questions for staff. This ordinance was the subject of a public hearing and has been properly introduced and discussed. Is there any additional comments or discussion?
I think just to that, the point of, related to, to that explanation, which I appreciated, I thought was very valuable, is the limitations of the used market relative to the CDL requirements. That, it's just very, very difficult to identify, folks. So, the used market is loaded with, with trucks, but you got to have a CDL in order to drive one. And so, that, that burden, basically, we don't want to buy equipment and let it sit there until we find appropriate staff. So, that's, there, I paraphrased, right?
Yes.
Lengthy, comprehensive email, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item eleven is to consider, to, to consider introducing an ordinance amending the fiscal year, fiscal year, two thousand and twenty five budget in the amount of one million four hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty two. You guys are playing musical chairs. Mr. McCormick?
I'll take this one, Mr. Lee. Thank you. So, this item does not require a public hearing. The vast majority of this is appropriations for school grants and fund balance to wrap up projects that they are working on. That's about one point four million dollars. There's fifty thousand, forty five thousand dollars in grants to CAPSOL, four, or I'm sorry, twelve thousand dollars in state aid to the Youth and Family Services Fund and then various other charges for services and miscellaneous revenue that we're appropriating throughout the year. No additional taxes or anything like that in this, just a basic cleanup appropriation.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Comby. Any discussion?
Just, I, I could, just as a flashback moment of what an improved process this is versus the way we used to do it. I've been, when I first got on council, it was every onesie twosie little, you know, four hundred bucks of a, of a, a, of a, of a grant the school system got and it was all, so this is, this is such a much cleaner way of doing this, so.
This ordinance will receive final consideration at the June ninth regular business meeting. Item twelve is to receive a presentation of the proposed fiscal year, two thousand and twenty six capital improvement plan. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, I know that is small, so I went ahead and printed out for council, a copy. This is just, what's on the screen now is kind of the top half for what you might consider the uses for the capital improvement program. The bottom of your sheet are the sources of the funds, a couple of highlights and things to consider. We did a good amount of work during the, during December on the capital improve, on the capital improvement program for this year. We appropriated, appropriated about a million dollars for the schools or not about exactly a million dollars for the schools, for the high school project. There were some funds in there for tax software rebuild for the commissioner and the treasurer. There was eight hundred thousand dollars to the animal shelters, so it really lightened what we had the work to do on the CIP for two thousand and twenty six. There are still some big items to point out. Fire truck replacement fund, we've been trying to get into the habit of putting aside funds every year so that when the next fire truck comes due to replace, we don't have to put aside one point five, two million dollars at a time. We have a little fund there that's a reserve that we can go to. The animal shelter relocation, that project hadn't been bid when we did the reserves for that. The reserve was eight hundred thousand. The bid came in at one point one million, so that's the other three hundred thousand dollars for that project. Locally responsible road maintenance will continue that project or continue those funds as they've been the last three years. East Main Delphine signal replacement and the flashing yellow lights and the unsignalized intersection improvements are all majority VDOT funded projects along with the Hohman Parkway Bridge and the Fourth Street pedestrian improvement program. The bridge stabilization program, that's one of two appropriations for that. Most of that is funded by the bipartisan infrastructure act. We haven't gotten any word that those funds have been rescinded like the brick grant was. If we get any, if we have any, get any news of that, we'll certainly let council know. But as far as we know, those funds are still out there to be applied for. Waynesboro Commerce and Industrial Park, that's a planning for the road through that project and most of that is funded by the design grant. That's the first item on the sources for the hundred fifty thousand. Nature's Crossing and Technology Center, that's the set aside for the debt payment. The five hundred and twenty thousand, we'll continue to put it in the CIP for this year and then eventually we'll have to roll it into the debt service fund or the bond fund to actually pay for the bonds as they go. But for this year, we'll continue to pay cash into that project until we get to a point where we have to borrow probably later in the fiscal year or later in middle of two thousand and twenty six. East Main Streetscape, two hundred and two thousand, four ninety nine, that is the planning and the smart scale funds for that project. Various projects, we've gotten in the habit of putting the CDBG funds into this fund because they are recurring. They do go over multiple years sometimes, so they're easier to track if they're in the CIP fund where the appropriation doesn't lapse, where if they're in the general fund, the appropriation lapses. And then, the companion, two hundred thousand dollars of the community vitality fund to a hundred thousand dollars that I had planned in fund balance. The bottom are all of the sources, the main ones that I, the, well, we look at all of them, but the main ones that I pay attention to to make sure that we can balance and fund everything are the balance needed from local funding at the very bottom. That's basically how much you need out of fund balance to make all of, make all of the projects work. And so, I did go ahead and put a slide together to work through kind of, here was your, the top line is your unassigned fund balance from your audit, a couple of small reserves that you have in your general fund to fund.
fund to fund IT fleet and economic development projects. And then, the bottom one are your fund balance needs for your small cap and your fund balance needs for your large cap, and those item balance, those items balance. So, this is just your twenty twenty-six CIP. The plan will be to bring the remainder of the CIP twenty twenty-seven through unplanned, unfunded, the next four, five years. At the next meeting, to introduce the ordinance at the next meeting for the CIP, to introduce the small cap ordinance at the next meeting. And then, at the June twenty-third, those items would be eligible for adoption, as well as to consider the appropriation for the high school project at that meeting as well. Those items will probably all be large enough, they'll need public hearings. So, no action required this evening. If you have any feedback, I'd be happy to consider it now, or if you have questions, as they come to you, I know this is the first time you all have seen this. So, if you have questions, as they come to you, feel free to email me, and we'll hit this again next meeting, as well as have an appropriation ordinance ready to go.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? Item thirteen is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing and directing the use condemnation to acquire a portion of tax map, tax map parcel number fifty-four dash one dash seventeen A, containing a stormwater management facility. Call on the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution authorizing and directing the use of condemnation to acquire approximately two point six acres that is a stormwater pond within the city. This was previously the subject matter of a public hearing several meetings ago. We have not been able to make progress on the voluntary acquisition of this land, so we're bringing the resolution back before you so that we have this as, as an option to acquire with condemnation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sloate. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it five zero. Item fourteen, citizen comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kurt Langberg.
Kurt Langberg, one twenty-nine Willowshire Court. First of all, I'd like to thank you for responding to my issue about the safety of Hopeman Road that I brought up last time, and for your comments to the, for your communication to the sheriff, Mayor Lee. In the interest of maintaining the safety of our community's middle school children crossing that road to school, and for the people driving there, I was wondering if it might be a good idea to adopt two simple changes to Hopeman Road that might improve the safety of that road. First being to make the speed limit of Hopeman a uniform thirty-five from end to end. It's a simple two-lane road, probably doesn't need three different speed limits on it. The second is that during the school year, that there should be a police presence or speed trap within the school zone from the morning hours between seven thirty and eight thirty AM, and the afternoon hours of three to four PM, when children are going to and leaving the middle school from, from the community across the street from it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Andrea Jackson?
Andrea Jackson, and I live in Ward A. And I just want to say that, again, I've been here, born and raised all my life, and I came back after I graduated college in twenty-ten. I've been involved for fifteen years in the community and trying to be in local politics. I think the community should be involved in the last five years, especially since pandemic, trying to know about the, the budget and educating myself. And I'm quite disappointed. Many people got up and said how, they are thankful that, are happy about the compromise of the eighty-two cents. You know, I'm not, because I remember that two years ago, the, the taxes was ninety cents, and they was cut thirteen cents to seventy-seven cents. And nobody thinks or feels a savings, but they always come and complain about raising. And the fact is, is that we need to invest in the city. And the simple fact is, is that people in our city council people are proud of themselves that you got ninety-five percent of the goal done at eighty-two cents, which you could have got a hundred percent at eighty-five. You didn't have to go to eighty-nine. You could have gone to eighty-five. And the people that, you know, suffered is the people. The mayor said that he wanted to do something different and have a living wage, and he didn't, you know, complete that goal. And the people who are suffering is the employees. They coming in, not getting all of the money, and they coming in at a quarter late. And you know who's suffering? Families. My niece's father worked at Public Works, and I asked him on Friday, because he come, my father passed away, he come and mowed the yard. I said, how you feel about that? You work at Public Works. He said, I've been working there ten years. I could get a job, you know, somewhere else, which a lot of other people do, and we talked about that, you know, trying to retain people. He said, well, I stay at, in Waynesboro because I want to be here with my family. But I've been working there ten years, and they had help wanted sign out there for all of the ten years I've been there. And the people, I mean, like, I canvassed, you know what I mean, last year, Ward A, and they say, oh, you know what I'm saying, like, we living in Ward A because that's where we could afford to live. And they don't even invest in our ward, but we still out here working. You know what I'm saying? And the simple fact is, is that, you know, the cities set the precedent and the tone. And if y'all not giving a living wage, and then you have a nerve enough to be like, it says, the median house value in this city is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, resulting in an increase of a hundred and thirty per, per household in an annual, the ballot, the annual basis, or eleven dollars and twenty-five per month. The population is includes twenty percent living below the poverty level, and is nearly double the state average, which is true. Over half of the city, that went from yellow to whatever, over half of the city.
Yeah, it jumped.
I'm gonna say what I got to say. Over half of the city live in, because you know what? The people who was here disrespecting me last time, didn't pay attention to the rules.
I have to cut you off. Thank you.
Over half of the city living in a living wage.
Again, your time has expired.
And it's a bias here. You got the nerve enough to always say something to me, but you don't never say nothing to those people that disrespected me.
Your time.
Mayor Kenny Lee.
Your time.
And y'all know better. You know better. All of those people that, you had all those rules up there, and not once you didn't say nothing, Kenny.
Don't, don't, don't make me.
Not once!
Don't make me do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Item fifteen, communications correspondence calendar. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. I wanted to elaborate on an item that Mr. Wood mentioned earlier this evening, and that's draw folks' attention to the tour of the town. That's a downtown event occurring tomorrow from noon until seven PM. This is the primary fundraising event for the Destination Downtown Waynesboro. It is a ticketed event. You can get your ticket at visitwaynesboro.com. And for that ticket, you would enjoy discounts, gifts, and other sort of amenities associated with participating vendors and businesses in the downtown area. So, again, this gives a great opportunity, one, to support Destination Downtown Waynesboro financially, but also gives a great opportunity to provide some introduction, exposure, and traffic for our downtown businesses, which are so important, both to the vitality of the downtown area and the economy of Waynesboro. Other upcoming attractions in the downtown area that will occur before we're together again for a meeting, remind everyone that Hiker Fest is June sixth and June seventh. That's a Friday and Saturday. Primary event is on Saturday. And then, on Friday, June sixth, is the Wayne Theaters Gala. That's a ticketed fundraising event, a celebration that occurs in downtown Waynesboro, celebrating the success of the Wayne Theater. The week following that, beginning on Sunday, the eighth, I think, the Dooms Carnival will be in the downtown area. So, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hamp.
Mr. Mayor?
A couple of things I'd, I'd ask Mike about, and I just thought for the benefit of far forget. One, just amen hallelujah that the Windsor Avenue rail, railroad crossing is being repaired, right? So, amen. And then, the other was, I've just gotten, you know, the latter than last week, a dump truck of people asking about the status of the Greenway.
Sure.
And so, hopefully, maybe in about a month, four or five weeks.
Yes, yes, sir.
It'll be brought back online once the, the, the connection into the river is made through the, the Loth Project, so.
Correct. There'll still be work going on.
Sure.
But they'll open that up and restore access.
I know folks are real anxious to, yeah.
So, thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen is adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Comby. All in favor?